Evening. We'll call to order the Thursday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call or roll?
Sirksina.
Here.
Councilmembers. Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Great to have everybody on board, and what a beautiful day it's been. We're gonna jump right into our tradition of a young scout leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have today Sohan Baba that's with us. Sohan, just introduce yourself, and great to have you with us. Tell us a little bit about about where you're at these days in your scouting career.
Hello, my name is Sohan Boba, and I'm currently a tenderfoot rank in scouts. I'm almost second class. My favorite things to do are swimming, playing outside. Yeah, and and scouting, and scouting. I'll
Don't don't forget to throw scouting in there. Well, that sounds like a pretty good lineup, young man. Well, we're gonna have you go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us, and the rest of us are gonna be on mute, so you can recite the pledge, and we'll have good audio quality, okay? So you go go ahead when you're ready.
Okay. Mister Mayor, I pledge all allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sohan. Excellent job. You can come back and recite the pledge for us anytime.
Thank you.
You have a good weekend, okay?
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move to approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Second. I've moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those pose. Agenda is approved. Okay, our next item is a proclamation. We have a proclamation regarding the two thousand and twenty one National Public Works Week, and it's gonna be my honor to read the proclamation. Whereas public services, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as waters, water, sewers, traffic, streets, and engineering, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities is where, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the effort and skill of public works professionals, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I Scott Sirksina, Mayor of the City of Clive, do hereby proclaim the week of May sixteenth through the twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, as National Public Works Week in the city of Clive, Iowa, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, and I'll be pleased to sign this this proclamation, and it goes without saying, but I'll say it again, and I think we would all agree with every word in that proclamation. So Jeff, our hats off to you and your team and and to your colleagues around the greater Des Moines metro. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Right, now we're gonna move to citizens' presentation. This is where anybody that's joining us on the call can address the council on an issue that is not currently on the agenda this evening, and if you're here to do so, please raise your hand to Pete, let him know you're there, and he'll get you connected with us.
Folks, if you'd like to catch my attention, you can use the chat function, or if you click on the participant tab at the bottom of your Zoom screen, on that icon, once you click, a separate window will open up, and at the bottom of that window, you will see the raise hand function. That's the best way to catch my attention. There, I do not see the hands going up.
Thank you, Pete. Seeing none, we're gonna move to another presentation. We have with us this evening the illustrious Polk County Supervisor, Robert Brownell. Bob, nice to see you on Zoom. Thank you for joining us and look forward to hearing from you tonight.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me. Robert Brownell, Polk County Board of Supervisors, broadcasting from east of eighty first street, where all the cool kids live, right, John? So glad to see you, and I say you see virtually, but after CDC's announcement today, we'll be seeing each other in person here probably soon, I hope. You know, normally I start my county updates up with a kind of a COVID update, and the biggest update is that. The probably the most risk averse organization in any level of government known to man is CDC, and came out today and said, no more masks if you got vaxxed, and so it'll be pretty apparent who hasn't been vaccinated, I guess, from here on in, but it's good news, and so we look for maybe a little bit of incentive there for people that aren't vaccinated to get vaccinated and and get this thing behind us. But the numbers are good. They've been good for a while, and what we're kind of tracking right now is hospitalizations, and metro hospitals are running around forty or so patients, which is the lowest it's been since, I don't know, last summer, maybe, at the lowest point, and dropping all the time. The state's maybe a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty nine, so we're kind of stuck in that area right now, which is very good. You have to remember that just, you know, ninety days ago, we were running eleven hundred hospital hospitalizations in the state and maybe two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy here in the metro in our region. So it's really plunged, and that's great, great news, and part of that is the vaccinations, part of it's just the mitigation of strategies that have been used, and, you know, we've had variants come along. UK is the biggest one in Iowa right now, and but this this virus mutates a lot, and but so far it we haven't found a mutated virus that stands up to the vaccines at all. So another good reason to get vaccinated, right? So it's going well. Hats off to everybody that's that's had a hand in in the response. It's been, I think, probably the biggest level of satisfaction for me, at least, and one thing, among the many others, is the level of cooperation and collaboration among the hospitals here in the metro has been absolutely stunning, and nothing like this has happened before. So there has been some, you know, people say this, what good has COVID done? Well, there's been some good things, actually, and that's one of them. Broadlawns Mercy One and Unity Point and VA have kind of come together and and really helped out, along with, you know, smaller partners, clinics, primary healthcare and others, and really done a tremendous job, and including Polk County Health Department. So and we're reaching out into more marginalized communities, refugees and immigrant communities in particular, to vaccinate them. They're responding enthusiastically, and we don't have any anti-vaxxers in the refugee and immigrant community, I can tell you that. So they're they're coming out in very strong numbers and doing their part. So I mean, it's just been great. Our homeless population, we talked about them for a while earlier today, and the level of COVID among our homeless population has been extremely low. One of our concerns last March and April, two thousand and twenty, was that these folks get out, walk around, and spread the virus. You know, we didn't know that much about the virus at the time. It doesn't really work quite like that, but we thought that was a danger. So we put a lot of the homeless from the shelter into hotels, including in Clive, as you well know, and Matt and Scott and I worked on that a little bit together, and that allowed us to socially distance folks in their homeless shelter itself, which has kept the incidence of COVID way down. You know, we had a building at the fairgrounds set up for four hundred beds for quarantine, and I think our high of high usage was maybe twenty five in that building, and some of those were actually not homeless people. There were people that needed to quarantine, but were living in multi-generational houses, and so I would try to place them to go quarantine, but our level of COVID among the homeless has been extremely low. I don't know if another metro has done as well as we have in that regard. So that's that's been great, because it has a lot of reverberations to it. And interestingly enough, a lot of the homeless that we stuck in hotels in Clive and Urbendale are not going back to the shelter. They're going into supportive housing and have their own places to go to now. So they're not they're not in a shelter. They're in more of a house, which has been good. Couple other things I thought I'd cover, touch base on, or that what they call the tax bill. We call it the mental health bill at the legislature. It's twelve seventy six, I believe. This is one that encompasses a lot of stuff, funding of DART, backfill, telehealth, mental health. I don't know what else is in there, but lots of stuff, and so it's a pretty complicated bill. One of our strategies going in was to get it, maybe if they pass it to make the effective date maybe down to about a year, that's probably, looks like it probably won't happen. But everything else we've wanted in there, and we've kind of stayed away from the backfill argument, but everything else we've wanted in there on mental health, we've kind of gotten, and so we're, I think we're feeling pretty good about where the bill is right now. There's a couple of other things we need to, we think we need to have. Level of cooperation and collaboration that we have now with Broadlawns needs to continue, and the bill has a sunset of that, and Broadlawns Board isn't even for that, so I think that'll probably come out. But but otherwise, I think we're feeling pretty good about it. It does provide a different way to fund mental health in this state, and I've been coming before this council and others for ten years now, and at least, and talking about how the system doesn't work based on property taxes. So this is an attempt to take it off the property tax rolls completely, which not everybody's for, but I but I can tell you, it's not working the way it is, so taking off property tax rolls and turning it into more of a state-funded piece. If you look at it like this, the money coming out of backfill is what's being used to fund mental health, and that's not totally accurate, because the money coming out of backfill is more than what we're putting into mental health, but not by a lot. It gives them some room to grow, and our population in Polk County, which is about five hundred thousand, we think, or more, you know, we get credit for that, for that population being there, where we didn't, we didn't get much credit for that before. So in other words, I think that bill's moving along. It's we're we're kind of standing along with the Senate and the governor's office. The House is a different matter, so we'll see where they end up, but I think the Senate and Governor Reynolds want this to be passed pretty badly, so so we shall see what happens. But we're feeling good about our mental health budget right now. Right now, it's fully funded. We can take on children. We can, you know, put people back in housing that we had to kick out of housing, and and all the non-core and core stuff that we normally fund is funded. So right now, it looks pretty good. Had lunch with Stephanie Horak from Clive Community Services. We talked a lot about what's going on with them and the great work they're doing, and our allocation typically has been eight thousand dollars from Polk County, and matched by the city, and then the foundation has given some money to up to maybe twenty four, twenty five thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, and and this year, we upped ours to nine thousand dollars, and I advised our illustrious mayor of that, so hopefully the city can come up with their nine thousand dollars too. But they're they're doing a great job of serving immigrants and refugees that are, there's a lot of them in Clive, and they're doing a good job of serving them in other communities, too. So that's great. Matt and I have been talking a lot about a couple of things. One of them is the future of the Diamond Center, working on that, and what could what might that look like when you move out into your new building? So that's kind of an ongoing conversation. I don't know how that's gonna come out, but, you know, the county has some some interest in, you know, some things, including, you know, pantries and clothes closets and those kinds of things, so depends on the accessibility and things like that, but but the conversation goes on about that, so it's not just a kind of a dead issue. What else? I think that's about it, really. Scott, what else did I have here? Yeah, that's about it for now. We continue those conversations with the Diamond Center and and other things, and so we'll keep on working. Oh, I did, the last thing I wanted to mention is, and Matt's been badgering me about this, the FEMA assistance that the county has promised, that's on it's on track, and I don't have the exact date, but it should be sometime yet this before summer starts, and you guys can get going on that. That's the area south of the university, right, Matt, that you guys are looking at for clearing out in a floodplain kind of area. We're gonna assist you with that, maybe what, sixty five, sixty six thousand dollars, I think. So that's on track, and so I'll keep working with Matt on that. Anyway, any questions, comments, insults? I'm ready to take them.
Bob, I will tell you, that's a pretty good list. We could probably spend the rest of the evening just on what you put before us. But thank you for your help on everything that we're doing. Everything that you've touched on is very, very meaningful, relevant, in play, and so we look forward to our continued partnership on on all of those things. Council questions for supervisor? Bob, I think you I think you dazzled them.
I thought I'd at least get something out of Mike McCoy. He's sitting outside there in his deck. I thought he got asked question or two at least.
I was told to be, I was told to be nice to you tonight, and so I'm respecting that out of the east sider.
That's good.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you again. Always appreciate your update, and, you know, we'll we'll be talking soon, for sure.
All right. Thanks very much, Scott.
Have a great week, and you're welcome to stay with us as long as you'd like.
All right. Thanks very much.
Okay, the second presentation is from Chief Rowe regarding the two thousand and twenty one continuous process improvement for the fire department. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. I am gonna kick off here. So as you can imagine, with any organization, one of the things that we that everybody struggles with is communication, and please want to be in the know. You want to be sharing meaningful, relevant. In our case, a lot of times, it's mission-critical information to staff, and one of the things that adds an additional challenge to us is our full-time folks, they're working every third day, and our part-time people, some are very active, and they work a couple of times a week, but we do have some part-time folks that only work three or four times a month. So we all feel like we get emailed to death, and folks come to work, and they have a mission-critical need to know if there's been any changes over the last two days, over the last three weeks. You know, how do we how do we get that information out there without emailing people to death, or without people spending half the day going through email to try to figure out what is really what is really important versus what's just a nice to know? So as we were particularly planning for the new station, we were looking for some way to look at different things that display the information on a call, and we stumbled into a program that allows you to put together a dashboard for your organization, to put pertinent information in, and it integrates in with some other technologies that we use. So we we have one TV TV monitor up and going, and kind of a beta test, so that we're ready and have it all tweaked when we move into the new building. But it was easier than what we thought to get going, and our staff have been very happy with it. So the easiest thing for me to do is just kind of move through some of these slides and show you the information that it provides to us. A big thing that impacts us is whether we have equipment, whether that's tools, or whether that's an ambulance out of service, whatever it is. So we've got a way to instantly get that information out. Road closures, particularly this time of the year, are important, and with our closest unit response, it's not just Clive that we're worried about. We're also worried about our mutual aid neighbors. We've got pass-along information, just kind of some some nice-to-know things, and any any daily tasks that need to go on. Shift schedule. You can see who's working today, what their assignment is. You can see who is scheduled to work tomorrow. Training assignments. Hopefully, my name's not on that one, because it says overdue. We've got upcoming events, meetings, different things that need to happen. Weather scrolls through. All of these screens that you see, they're up for three or four seconds on this dashboard, and then they scroll through to the next item. So we've always got a good idea of what's going on with weather, real-time radar, wind direction during a day, direction and speed is important for us for some of the things we do with fire response and hazmat response. Then we have slides that work a lot like a PowerPoint, where you can populate those with things that you want people to see. So this example was a a training event that was offered on May tenth. Just put out some some fun information, mission statement, vision statement. We share information on response times. How quickly are we getting out of the door when we're responding to an emergency? Similar thing, but we we show how each shift is doing, so that we get some I get some healthy competition between crews. We put a calendar out every month that shows people what the upcoming training is. And at any point, as as the dashboard is scrolling information, if there's a call, it gets fed through from Westcom, shows us obviously the address, the type of call, which apparatus are due, shows you mapping, the quickest way to get there, and gives you a a street view visual of what what house or building that you're looking for. And also gives you the distance and estimated time time to get there, and there's a clock at the top that'll that'll run for three minutes to let you know how long it's been since the the call was dispatched. So kind of a neat, a neat technology. Again, it was fairly simple to put in. It runs off a Chrome box and and Wi-Fi, so it didn't didn't require a lot of assistance from IT. Very easy for us to integrate. If Urbendale ever chooses to use this, we'll be able to share some some information back and forth on on station status, but really, really has got us away from using email to to share mission-critical information, and somebody comes to work at six in the morning, you know, spending three or four minutes in front of the monitor and letting this stuff cycle through, they can easily be brought up to speed with things that they need to know that that impacts what they're gonna do during the day. Any any questions? Anybody has?
Chief, thank you. This this looks really good. You probably said this back at the beginning, but do you have this on several large screens kind of throughout the department, or is it just on, you're seeing it on desktops?
Oh, right. Right now, it's just on a a large screen at the station. We had we had identified this product early enough, and the value in it, that we've actually specked in three positions in the new building where the the screen will be up scrolling the information. So we'll have it in the day room, the reports room, and then one in the apparatus bay.
Sounds good. Council questions for Rick?
Chief.
Go ahead, Eric.
Okay. Quick quick question. During the strategic planning for Clive Fire Department, communication was one of the challenges that we wanted to identify, both internal and external. I think you've done that. I think this is a great vehicle to do that. Who's in charge of updating this information, and how do you how do you have that process set up?
No, that's a that's a great question. All of the officers have the ability to to hop in and change the information, and it's really is is easy as it's on Google Sheets, so it's really just a spreadsheet, and then there's a there's a Google slide deck that's just like PowerPoint, and as soon as you update it, within just a couple of minutes, it cycles through. So very, very easy to do, very easy for multiple people to do it, so that we, you know, if you if you limit the number of people that you can do it, then your information starts getting outdated and not timely. So we've tried to keep it open that so that there's somebody there every day that has the ability to to manage that.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, this is great stuff. I was just curious where you found this software, and do you know if there are other departments around the metro that have something similar, or will be going to something like this? And then you mentioned Urbendale. Is there value in trying to integrate that with other departments?
Yeah, I know that Johnston Grimes uses it. We actually demoed this on Tuesday night. We hosted the Polk County Fire Chiefs meeting and demoed that to them, so there could be some interest that comes out of that. I should also say that Lieutenant Greg Glundy did most of the the legwork and groundwork on that. He was a single dad tonight and unable to assist with the presentation, or he would have, he would have been doing that. So I think I think it's a newer product, these dashboard systems, and I think as people see them, more people will 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 decide that it's it's a good investment. It's, you know, cost-wise, it's thirty five dollars a month per monitor, so, you know, for for our investment, it'll be under a hundred dollars a month, which I think is reasonable for as many systems as it integrates in with and does the automatic CAD feed. How we found it was, we were visiting with our vendor that provides us CAD feeds on our cell phones to see if what products they had, as we were thinking about presenting that, or how we could see that in the new building. They're associated with this company, so we we just started digging into it, and they had some really good videos showing how other departments had set it up on the internet. So we had a good feel for what it would do, and we could pretty quickly see the value in it. But yeah, it would be, you know, with Urbendale, certainly we could self-populate it ourselves, as we've done with the the road closure stuff now. If they come on board, it'll just be easier for us to share that information.
Other questions, council? Chief, good stuff.
All right.
Thanks very much. We'll look forward to seeing it in action. Okay, we're gonna move on to consent items.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by John. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to action items. The one action item we have this evening is Rental Housing Program Guidelines Amendment and a resolution accepting amended rental housing program guidelines, and Ryan's gonna take us through that. Ryan?
Mayor, council, can you hear me okay?
Hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay. What we're gonna go through through tonight would be a continuation of our discussion with Amanda that we had on March twenty fifth regarding residential occupancy, kind of an investigation or kind of a review into the housing that we we currently have and and the possibility of overcrowding within the dwelling units, whether it be a rental unit or an owned unit by by owners. So what we have in front of you tonight is is kind of it it's kind of a review of what we what we looked into and kind of a direction that staff felt most appropriate to address some of the concerns that were sought out during this review process. So I'll go ahead and get started here at the PowerPoint. Can everybody see my screen? Okay?
Screen looks good.
Okay. So where we're currently at with our current program guidelines, Amanda kind of laid out to you that we use an occupant load table for the establishment of how many occupants can be within a residential dwelling. We use that in single-family units, homeowner occupied, and we also use that same formula in our rental code as well. This this table is supported by the International Property Maintenance Code, of which we use strictly for the rental housing program with enforcement. Utilizing this approach, in most situations, overcrowding is limited appropriately. With this program, it assumes non-transient atmosphere for neighborhoods. It does not consider use terms like lodging house or boarding houses as identified in the building codes, and we're gonna go through those tonight. That's part of the amendment is includes including these into our rental program, and then multiple lease opportunities are not regulated in our current program guidelines. So what we found out is there's a new strategy So what we found out is there's a new strategy out there. Maybe it's new, maybe it's old. I'm not sure. But we found out that some of our rental owners are leasing out by the room within the homes. So what that's doing is if you've got a five bedroom house, you could have five separate leases going on within that house. And if you've got a couple of multipurpose rooms that are large enough, you may have a couple additional leases for those as well. So the multi-lease situation that is occurring can lead to problems. And we'll kind of go through those problems here on the upcoming slides. So some of our concerns is, are that we've, we've kind of identified that transient opportunities now exist in traditional non-transient areas of the city. You know, in our residential neighborhoods where these rental units are at, these opportunities for transient situations are occurring. And I don't think it's healthy in those residential neighborhoods. Life safety concerns regarding housekeeping responsibilities and the lack of communication amongst tenants in certain housing arrangements. There's definitely that life safety concern. In one of the units we went through with this rent by the room strategy was, was used. We were not able to get into all of the bedrooms because the, the tenant who was showing us around, A, didn't know who even stayed in those rooms. B, didn't have keys to those rooms. C, didn't know whose responsibility it was to change out smoke detector batteries. So you can see with different, this different lease strategy by the room can lead to safety concerns within, not only communication, but in emergency situation. Who's going to account for all these people that are living in this house when nobody knows, you know, one another or has any responsibilities? So the concerns identified definitely may pose an elevated risk to the tenants and neighbors, if not brought into building code compliance for the use. And most of you know, as risk increases, the building code requirements dial into the risk. So what we're asking or what we're proposing tonight is to utilize some of the strategy that building codes use to present a better and, and more safe environment for the neighbors in that community, but also the tenants in the, in the building itself. So the new guidelines, basically you've got a residential dwelling unit. We're still going to use the occupant load table to define how many occupants can live in that, that unit. One of the biggest items that we're proposing for change is all occupants are going to be bound by a single lease with the property owner for the entire property. This is going to promote non-transient neighborhood atmosphere, like what that house was built for, it was a neighborhood, it needs to stay a neighborhood. It's going to offer a safer environment for the tenants and neighbors. It's going to hopefully create some responsibility. The one who signs the lease and has the lease with the owner is going to be held responsible for the, the lease, the details of that lease. It's going to promote better communication among the tenants. And this, this standard rental unit is residential use. So it'd be allowed to be regulated in the international residential code. Now there are some additional examples of multi-use or multi-lease properties that we'll get to here soon. But this is what you'd see with that. Basically one lease. And if the occupant load table allowed, you could have up to 10 occupants as you see here in this, in this one, one house. So multi-lease. Now we're starting to talk about some of the building code items like lodging house, one family dwelling where one or more occupants are primarily permanent in nature and rent is paid for guest rooms. That's a definition provided in the international building code. One of the key ingredients to this lodging house philosopher or use would be that it must be owner occupied. So this got brought into the code back when kind of bed and breakfasts were kind of set up. And most bed and breakfasts, they are owner occupied and they basically rent out some rooms. If zoning would allow this, this lodging house philosophy would certainly fit this mold here for that particular program. Now if a rental owner wanted to utilize this strategy, for instance, if they lived in their house, they could use this lodging house determination. However, there are some, some regulations on lodging houses. There can only be a maximum of five guest rooms that can be leased. And the maximum occupant load is still calculated from the occupant load table. However, it cannot exceed 10 occupants in that house. And this residential use is also recognized by the international, international residential code as well. So in this example, remember we've got an owner occupied situation. We're going to identify that through homestead exemption, application or verification. And what this does is we're hoping that the property owner who lives there and is leasing out the rooms is going to take full responsibility of taking care of parking situations. Making sure the yard's cleaned up. Making sure, you know, smoke detector batteries, things like that are, are taken care of. Again, here's a couple of examples. You could have a family of, of four, like the, the picture on the right there, a family of four. Maybe they've got some extra bedrooms they want to lease out. As long as that owner lives there, they're allowed to lease out as long as it's not more than five guest rooms and the total occupant, including the people who live there or own the house and their family members, does not exceed 10. And this is recognized by the residential code. Multi-lease option number two. This would be boarding house. So boarding house is a building arranged or used for lodging for compensation with or without meals and not occupied as a single family unit. So let's say the rental owner or the owner of the property does not want to live there. They just want to rent this out. Okay, this multi-lease strategy would be applied, however, the risk increases when the owner doesn't live there. And there's more than one lease that would be, be offered. So what we're proposing is this boarding house is recognized by the international building code, not the international residential code. So the international building code is going to recognize this and it's the minimum provisions for this house need to meet chapter nine and 10 of the international building code. What this means is you could have sprinkler systems required inside this rental house. You could have exiting emergency lights, things more business or commercial building type requirements required inside this residential dwelling unit. And the reason for that is the risk goes up, the requirements of the building code go up. So the owner is not required to occupy this type of, of unit. So you have kind of the same picture here, except for it's a safer environment for not only the tenants. The building is safer, but also the neighbors who live close by, it's a safer environment for them as well. So drafting these, these amendments, we did send a letter out to all the rental owners, letting them know that we're going to have a, a building code appeals board meeting and we're going to go through the new amendments. And we gave them the meeting time and date. We also updated the website, but, put the information on the website and we also did a Facebook post. We had five community responses regarding this. Two of them were, or excuse me, three of them were in, in support. Two of them were some rental owners that kind of disagreed with the approach. The B-CAB presentation was held on April 15th and they recommended approval of the update. If you all approve this, the timeline for compliance would be any new rental registrations would be required to immediately make their unit in compliance with the, the new rental guidelines. Anybody who has grandfathered in or already has rental units, they would not be required to make any changes until January of 2023 because that is when they will re-register their properties in the program. And our goal would be to let, you know, put out the communication that this is, these are the new guidelines and you have this amount of time to, to bring these, these properties in compliance if, if you have a lease strategy like, like we discussed earlier. Any questions?
Council questions for Ryan?
I have a couple. That was an excellent presentation and I think you've done some great homework. I'm wondering if all relevant homes are actually going through rental application process today? Is there a way that you know that you'll be capturing everyone either through informing them about the changes or any new ones that would come on board that they will know about this? So that's my first question.
Yeah, so we've got a couple of different strategy, strategies to check in on. One of them is the water billing department helps us out. They oftentimes check to see if who's paying the water bill actually matches who owns the property. In the case, it does not match. We investigate a possible rental opportunity or situation is occurring. So we follow up with the, the owner of the property and, and figure out what's going on there. In some cases, it, it may be a, a family member who maybe lives there and, and it's not a rental unit. But in some cases, yes, we've, we've brought on, well, many over the years that did not have registered, registered, were not registered in our program. And we, we brought them on board to get registered and be part of the program. Outside of that, we do have a handful of complaints that come in each year. And complaints a lot of times start the investigative work as to what is going on here. How come there's so many cars? Is this a rental unit or not a rental unit? Maybe it's just a large family with, you know, a few kids that have licenses. Depends on the situation, but yeah, there's always, there's always going to be a few out there that try to, try to, you know, skirt by the system. But hopefully we can catch them one way or the other. But we take them as they come.
Okay. And my other question was, the relatively few who were opposed to it, what seemed to be the objections?
Um, so I, the, the one gentleman who emailed in, it's probably going to be a change the way he has set up his rental business. You know, they look at, so it's interesting. You could take one of these units, we found out the guy was making over $2,500 on rent by doing the strategy. You know, they were renting out these rooms for $475 a room. And the, he was able to pull in quite a bit more money by utilizing this strategy. You know, had he, I'm not sure he could turn around and, and do a single lease and be able to charge that much. I'm not sure. So I think that was, I think the money thing was one of the, one of the complaints. He was not able to perhaps make as much money through the, through that, that strategy. The other one was just a, somebody who felt that an owner should be able to do what they want with their house. It's a private residence. The city shouldn't have any determination how they want to use that property.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Other questions, council?
Hey Ryan, I'm getting, I like it. I'm with Susan. This was thorough. Well done. You all have obviously spent a lot of time on our discussion and our discussion points. And you've probably gone through this, but walk me through the Airbnb type situation. Right? I own the house. I put it up on Airbnb. I'm not living there. I mean, I know some of them rent a room or two for a night, but on Airbnbs, but a lot of times it's just the whole house, right? What, what does that do to an Airbnb?
Yep. So the Airbnb, we've dabbled a little bit in investigating those. And we do keep, keep an eye on what's available or what's out there in our community for Airbnbs. The reason a lot of these Airbnbs are not part of our rental program is because in a calendar year, they are not renting out that space or house for more than 90 days on a calendar, in a calendar year.
So. That's the trick. Okay. And I'm not opposed to Airbnbs, you know, entirely just carp on. But I was just wondering how that would work with them and that 90 days, I think is the trick. It sounds like.
90 days, if they're going to rent, rent the place out for more than 90 days in a calendar year, they, they are required to sign up for a rental program. And we do have a lot of calls on an annual basis of people who want to do the Airbnb and they, they're asking those questions, you know, do we have to register this? And we kind of ask them what their business plan is. How many, you know, how many times on a calendar basis are they going to rent it out? And if they're less than 90 days, they do not have to, but we give them the, the spiel of, you know, this is a residential neighborhood, so make sure you're, you know, being a good steward, good neighbor, that type of thing. But yeah, Airbnbs usually are less than 90 days in a calendar year.
Thanks.
Ryan, I agree. This, I think this is, this is well done. And it would be my vote that it's approved and moved forward as quickly as possible. Other questions, council?
I would move the resolution.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero. Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is a discussion item regarding COVID-19 updates on programs, library, city meetings and related issues. And Richard's going to start us off. Richard?
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Really tomorrow is the kickoff of what I would consider our summer season. So tomorrow is our first Food Truck Friday event of the summer. So as we kind of get into that, I want to give the council just a quick overview of where we're at and, and how we're going to kind of deal with the ongoing pandemic. So kind of the first thing I want to talk about, which is generally the recreation programming. We will be dealing with each one of those programs individually. And I think what you'll see is a lot of different protocols, given the type of event where it's at, how many people are we expect to be at there? So some of the things we're going to be looking at is additional hand washing stations, recommendations for masks occasionally, depending on where it's at, if it's outside or inside, as well as through some of our summer programs. So really trying to take an individualized approach to each program. We think people are very, very excited about this. Just to give you kind of a feel of the picked up demand that we're seeing for programming in the pool. In March alone, we brought in $175,000 in programming revenue just from registrations of pool passes, summer camps, sports leagues. So we think there's a huge pin of demand this year that we're excited about and we know that people are going to be getting out there. So we just want to do it in the best possible way. In regards to the pool, I'm really getting close to getting that open again. Opening for the first time here at Memorial Day for a couple of days before closing again and opening for the full season on the fifth of June. So excited about that. We're about $30,000 ahead of where we normally would be on season passes and, and purchases there. So we think there's a huge demand there as well, but always trying to find the best ways to keep everyone safe and, and we're looking forward to that. Also wanted to talk about the library. The library we're anticipating will reopen all of our normal hours, so seven days a week. The hours that we are open before the pandemic started, starting Tuesday, June 1st. Continuing the mask while inside, but removing any restrictions on capacity. Additionally, we'll also be opening and starting in-person programming with the library. Some of the things we're really looking at and we're excited about is actually taking Some of the things we're really looking at and we're excited about is actually taking some of these things that were normally inside at the library and having them outside. So you're going to see things like some of the storytimes are actually being hosted in different parks to get people out into the park system and really finding some unique ways to do that. So we're excited about a lot of the things that are happening out there. And just really looking forward to getting a, hopefully what is a pretty normal summer with just a, a few of the precautions that we've learned over the last year that'll really make a big difference. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions that anyone might have.
Richard, it all sounds good. Sounds like summer.
Yes, we're excited.
Questions, counsel for Richard.
This is just a simple question, but what's the, what's the communication? How, how do we communicate as far as Food Truck Fridays with rain? Like tomorrow, there's a 50% chance of rain. How are we getting that information out?
Yeah. So yeah, we're kind of seeing that that's the case. So the rec team has kind of put together a protocol that will evaluate probably about noon tomorrow, what's the rain looking like? If it's going to rain during the event? If that's the case, we have a communication protocol that will go out through a lot of different things. So some social media, some email. We just try to get out there as much as possible. And then we'll also have, we'd also have signs on, on the actual park itself.
Other questions, counsel? Matt, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just a few things, your honor, as we start to kind of with the CDC, obviously announcement today, and I already kind of had this on the list to discuss, but and also aware that the, at least it's from what I've heard is the governor's intent to her emergency, public health emergency proclamation to run out at the end of May and, and no intent to extend that. That really, as we get into June here, looking at making some changes and getting back to some normal operations as Richard has kind of discussed with the, the, the programming. Also wanted to discuss with the council, the thought of doing that as well with these meetings, your, with your council meetings of looking at a, getting back to a kind of a hybrid approach, starting in June. I know we did that for one meeting last July and that worked well, giving the folks the opportunity to be in person or virtual in terms of their preferences and the, and the public's preference that may continue for quite some time of wanting to be virtual. So would like to start that in June with the council and then kind of step our way into it with some other boarding commission meetings as well. Likely starting with the development, kind of what I call the development commission. So planning zoning and board of adjustment and start kind of stepping into those hybrid environments for those boarding commission meetings as well over the next number of months as we're able to make sure we've got all the technology in place to be able to support those kind of hybrid approach meetings, which we're working on now. So wanted to bring that up for council discussion and then just talk about a few other things, your honor.
Counsel thoughts on this one?
So Matt, what does the, what do the council meetings look like, do you think, as far as social distancing and such?
I would say based on what we heard from the CDC just today, that at the DAAS, we wouldn't have any distancing, knowing that we have folks vaccinated. We would, my intent would be is to maintain some distancing for the seats in the, in the, in the audience. Knowing that we're a little more uncertain of the folks coming in from the public, what they may be. That's going to be a really tricky part of this new CDC recommendation is this whole vaccinated, unvaccinated component. And so as your city manager, I'm inclined, at least on the public side of things, is we don't necessarily go from zero to 90 right away on, on changing the, the restrictions that we have in the facilities, but at least start to walk down the path. And so on the public side of things, I'm going to encourage us to, to, as, as Richard alluded to, at least initially here, to keep the mask requirement for the public coming into the building and into the library and into council meetings. But look at things, and this is something that I'm evaluating right now on the works, workplace side, restrictions of what we can start to do with staff that are vaccinated in terms of in the city facilities and, and relaxing some of the current restrictions that we have in place in terms of mask wearing. So I know it's a long answer to your question and I kind of got into some other things, but that's kind of my, our, my thought process, at least that I would recommend to you right now that we would have the audience spaced out. We would, on the staff side, we would have only the department directors that have something on the agenda, on the regular action agenda that may need to be presenting to you or, or during the meeting would be present in the audience. Otherwise the others would be, continue to be virtual, just to kind of give us additional space in the audience area and not necessarily taking up those seats with staff. So that was kind of my thought process or my recommendations to you.
And clarify how, how you know staff is vaccinated or not?
We had, as an employer, we did some incentives for staff to be vaccinated. And so they had to show proof of that vaccination to us is to receive the incentive of an extra day of vacation. And so then I, obviously that's information that we have. We don't share. Obviously we keep that protected between Roxanne and myself. And so there is some understanding of, we're as a staff, we're approximately about 60% vaccinated based on that information at this time.
So Matt, leading up to today or to, leading up to the new CDC regulations or recommendations, rather, we, our intent was with the June 10th meeting to go into a hybrid format. Meaning the council would be there, we'd have three members on the DAAS, we would have two virtually and then staff and then public would come in virtually. Now we're, you're not recommending that. You're recommending a full council meeting with, with social distancing on seating for the public and mask wearing by the public. Is that correct?
That is correct. And that's just kind of my quick reaction to the, the new CDC recommendations today. That is something that you can consider now as a part of those recommendations in terms of what basically the CDC saying if you're vaccinated, no need to have a mask on indoors, no need to distance any, any, any longer. So that's what I would offer to the council. It's your preference on what you'd like to do.
I'm, I'm just going to offer a suggestion that we move slowly through that through June to full council meetings in July. Just because we don't know who's been vaccinated and who hasn't other than our own employees, right, and our own council members. But I, I think there's, there's maybe a little bit of gray area. We've, we've proven very effective, you know, at this mode of communication. And so my thought would be to, to start hybrid in, on, on June 10th. And then maybe by July, move to to full meetings as you're proposing. But that's just my thought. What's the desire of the council?
And just to, your honor, just to clarify real quickly too, is if, I, I even would say that if the council desires to, to have the hybrid approach even for your participation, where if there's members that want to continue to participate via Zoom, that that option still be available. I'm not necess, I'm not saying that that isn't the case. So I just want to make sure that, that I clarify my statement there that, that.
Important clarification. And I think we need to make that capability available for our board and commission meetings and everything else. Because, because I think we've seen it, meeting participation has gone up with Zoom because some people can make it work better than others than trying to have to go somewhere to go to a physical meeting. So I, I still think we've got to be prepared to be efficient in that way. Okay, counsel, back to our meetings though. Thoughts?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start. I agree with the hybrid, hybrid approach. I think that makes sense. And I think allowing folks the option based their, their feelings of, of safety is appropriate. With that said, I guess I'm going to disagree with you just slightly, Scott. Vaccinations are, I mean, it's proven they work, right? There's no question. And the science is there. Everyone has the opportunity to be, to be vaccinated at this point. If, if you're not getting vaccinated or been vaccinated, that's your choice. I don't personally believe we need to change how we do business because others don't want to get vaccinated. That's, they're taking their own risk if they choose to do that. And that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. If, if you're vaccinated, you're safe. And so I don't know, for me personally, I don't believe that we, we need to change things or, or slow down, you know, in, in how we reintegrate. I, I think everyone can get vaccinated at this point and, you know, if they choose not to, that's, that's their choice. That's fine.
So just, just to, just to clarify, again, I'm not disputing because I think we really agree and maybe I didn't say it the right way. But what I'm just suggesting by, by slow pedaling it through the month of June is just to, to give more time for more people to get vaccinated. If we're going to have full public meetings and we're going to have a, a full council chamber, that, that, that's all I'm suggesting. I agree with everything you're saying. So, so I, I guess that's, so your, your, your version of a hybrid Ted is hybrid with us, council members, but a full council chambers with the public.
Well, I, yeah, I, I mean, I guess what I mean by the hybrid is having the option of the Zoom call for, if, if someone doesn't still feel safe for whatever reason, I, I do think we should have that option for them. And the fact that we're, we're able to record these and provide them online for, for residents. And, and there, I think there are benefits to having it on Zoom as well. But yeah, so I, I, that's, that's what I mean by, by the hybrid. Otherwise, you know, again, if you're vaccinated, you know, no reason to mask up or, or require any of those types of impediments.
No, I agree there. Again, my, the, my focus is full council chambers with the public or not. And that, or i- i- and, and by that meaning that they're virtual, the public is virtual, we, we may be in a hybrid scenario with us. But we're going to have a full, a full council, we're open to the public council chambers.
I think we should.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Others?
Go ahead, Susan, go ahead.
Okay. I'd just like to suggest that we not assume that because a council member may have a need to participate by Zoom that they're doing that for health concerns. For example, on the 10th of June, I'll be coming back from the Iowa Association of Business and Industry Conference. And I think I'll be able to be back in time, but if I'm not, I'd like to participate remotely, at least until I can get there and do it via Zoom instead of over phone as we've done before. So there are other reasons to enable the hybrid participation. My other comment is 60% isn't very good for the city, really. You know, that's not hitting a percentage that's seen as more likely to be protective. And I'd push back a little bit on the thought that just being vaccinated guarantees you that you won't get sick. It basically helps you to not get as sick. So I, I do know of people who have had to break through situations even after vaccinations. So I think there are reasons to continue to be cautious.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that you couldn't get sick. I mean, you can still get the flu if you have the flu shot, but the chances of, of, of serious illness or, or death are miniscule compared to what they were. So that's all I meant.
Other thoughts on?
I would agree, Scott. I, I like the I like your recommendation to continue hybrid throughout, throughout the month of, of May. And I, I think we, you know, I think we need to reevaluate as we get into July, you know, based on percentages. You know, based on a lot of the science that we have. Susan, I do agree with you that I, I think we need to offer a hybrid version indefinitely for the most part, at least for some time. You know, for me, if for some reason I'm traveling, I, I, I feel like I get a lot more out of it being on Zoom than, you know, with a phone call right there. So I think it's a good option both for us and for citizens as well. So I think we do need to evaluate as we get into July on having full days and based upon, based upon the data out there.
Just to follow up and clarify Matt's initial point, as far as seating within the council chambers, we still think social distancing should be continued for the time being, since we don't know whether these folks are vaccinated or not.
That was my recommendation. Council member Edwards was to still space out the chairs like we did last July in the audience portion and, and require masks for those that are coming in from the public.
I think, John, the difference would be when we start doing that. Do we start doing that with our June 10th meeting? Or do we wait and still have the public be remote and then start that in the month of July? That's, that's how I'm sizing things up here. Mike, your thoughts?
I'm, I'm in, I'm in agreement with everyone. I, there's so few little nuances. I, I get, I understand Matt's predicament. I mean, as most of you do and certainly John, but you, you're in a private public. I mean, you know, a city, I mean, my building downtown is, we have tenants, we may own it, but we still have tenants paying the bills upstairs. And I've got to figure out with this new CDC deal, I had a phone call right after it was announced of, you know, from the chiropractor's office, we're and you're going to release the mask mandate inside the building. I mean, I hadn't even seen the news yet. And my quick answer was, I'm not going to right now. I'm going to slow down and take a look at the offices and we're in common areas. And I'm not comfortable enough to know who, what 60% has, you know, in Matt's case, what 60% has it and what doesn't. And so we're going to continue with the mask mandate for foreseeable future, really. And then I'm with Ted at, at some point, right? We've had long enough time. I mean, with my staff, you've had a long enough time to get vaccinated. You, you know, maybe June, maybe July, you've had plenty of time and, and opportunity. Now come kind of at your own risk, but I am going to take a slower approach. So I don't blame Matt for doing that and, and others wanting the chambers to be a slower approach. Even if you know everybody is vaccinated by your staff inside those chambers, you, you now are introducing folks that for whatever reason, don't, don't have it. So I like the hybrid forever. To tell you the truth, I mean, this is the new norm. You know, to, to have a Zoom type meeting and it does increase participation from the outside. But to, like you all said, I don't know that magic date to open up the chambers to the public. I personally wouldn't open them up in June if it were my building. Saying that, Metro really wasn't able to close their meetings. I mean, they were for a few, but we just didn't promote it that we were open until a chair did sometime ago. Saying they could come and then we only had one or two come after that. But that's a tough one, both for chamber meetings and for Matt in the public coming in, you know, through those back doors and the offices and such. So I know that doesn't answer your question, but I'll probably be wearing my mask regardless of a CDC rule or a vaccination for a while now. Heck, you might see me have it back on in the fall when the flu season comes around. I mean, it's a hell of a thing. Safety measure. For someone that's got influenza twice in the last three years, that thing may, may be on.
Well, Mike, thanks. That's good perspective. John, you had, when you piped up earlier, you really asked a question, but I'm interested in your opinion and your desire on how we move forward.
Well, I, I agree with what's been stated as far as making sure that we also, whether it's the council or the public, that we continue the hybrid situation. I think as Matt has suggested, we start with hybrid meetings in June where however many of the council feel comfortable being there, there and also on Zoom. Again, summer's a travel season. I think we'll have any number of council during the summer that will be zooming into the meetings simply because of their travel schedule and for reasons Susan is, is already indicated. As far as opening up the council meetings to the members of, of the public, I think we also have to think about when we do open up meetings, when we are going to be there, how we would handle someone who just shows up for a council meeting. You know, are we going to turn them away at the door saying, oh, you're not allowed in? That could be a, a scenario. And I think Mike perhaps has alluded to that in the Metro Waste meeting. So I'm just wondering if at the point we are back in the chambers, if we should also concurrently allow the public Should also concurrently allow the public in, but maybe in our communication, encourage them. Uh, to attend via Zoom. I just, I I'm just a little worried about someone showing up at the door and getting really ticked off, not being able to come in when they can. See that we're here unless we've got all the doors locked or whatever.
You know, it's it's really we're doing both the both at one time, so. Um, I and I, John, I guess that that makes sense. It it's probably in a an extreme situation. Uh, or an unlikely, but it could happen, and uh so I think we have to try to be aware of that.
You know what I've found too, Mayor, is that, you know, if we continue, let's say we continue the mask mandate. You you know, for folks to come into the chambers, the public, right? I know that sounds crazy. The CDC has released it, the governor's released it, whatever, but. He unless they're gonna have their vaccination card on their chest. As they walk through, you're taking their word for it that they've had vaccination. So all I'm saying is whatever we decide. Prepare for that person to not want to wear the mask, and what are we gonna do then? Right? I mean, I think, Council, you can you can make your rule for your building, right? The rule in this building is you wear a mask if you're the public or if you're coming into the chambers. And if that's true, then we ask them to put a mask on if that's our choice and they have to, or they need to. Get on Zoom.
Right, and and we're doing that now, I think, so this would just be a natural extension of that.
And I think it's, that'll be Pete's job to communicate exactly that, that you can, you know, you can still come to the meetings via Zoom. Uh, and we encourage you to do so. Uh, we will be in the chambers, but anyone coming in has to have a mask.
So then the question becomes, do we do we continue doing what we're doing like we are now through the month of June? Because if we if we go into the chambers, even in a hybrid situation with the council, we've gotta be available to the public if we're there. John is suggesting, and I think that's probably a good, that's good guidance. You know, uh, so so the public then is coming in as well. Do we? Do we continue on as we are through the month of June, monitor things and then go to that? To that socially distanced, wear a mask. Position in the month of July.
Well, I don't know that we have had particularly controversial topics on our month of June. Agenda that would draw in a big crowd. Certainly, a few people showing up to come to a meeting, I don't think would be problematic. And as Matt said, you can spread out the seats and um limit the number of seats that are there so that you you. You know, you can you can set a capacity, just like you can set a a mask mandate for the room, and if we hit capacity. You know, no one else is allowed in and and you have to zoom in, so I I still think we should be able to do it.
You get a pretty big following though, Ted. A lot of people might show up to see you just.
I didn't want to mention that, but.
I know, I know you're.
On June 24th, that gives us a month to get our act together.
On on having them come in and yet wear masks, or we'll we'll discuss that later. Professor.
Yeah, I I mask still be required, but I I still think I I want to encourage them to come in by by Zoom. I mean.
A lot of people would because it's more convenient than.
Your Honor, if I could offer to some just some context too for the council, because I know this is usually, a lot of times you. Want to know this information is from my, from what I understand from other communities in the metro. I believe pretty much everybody is gonna be in a hybrid format starting in June, including the city of Des Moines. Um, where they're in person. Um, some cities haven't stopped it. Um, they've, I know, like, City of West Des Moines has been in person or hybrid for um since last June. Um, Urbendale is now back in person. Waukees will be in person starting in June or hybrid. And and so when I say in person, I mean hybrid where there's the virtual option um for council or public. Um, what was that? So we would, um, and I just want to offer that as for for context, it, um. You know, if we were to continue the full Zoom setup, we would be one of probably the only community in June that would be doing that. I just want to make you aware of that. And that was part of, but not not the main driver of my recommendation. It was just recognizing now with the mayor or the the governor's proclamation. Ending at the end of May, um, that there was this kind of. Tide of of folks going back to more of this hybrid approach, knowing that, yes, I think we would still encourage the. The hybrid and the Zoom participation for the public. And our intent, and Pete and I have talked about this, is that the Zoom component of our meetings doesn't ever go away. And for the reason.
And I think I think we're confusing hybrid and Zoom capability, and we're always gonna have Zoom capability. We always, we always have some other kind of remote capability for at least, at least, very least, for our council members to participate. If they're remote, I don't see any of that changing. When I talk about hybrid, I'm talking about us, on the dais, staff in the chambers and the public. So what does hybrid mean?
So to me, I guess what a hybrid would mean is all three of the groups you mentioned. Would have the ability to be in person or virtual.
And Matt, you're telling us most communities are gonna do that in June. If they haven't already, which would be June 10th, is that right?
Yeah, and I believe, I think Des Moines was the the one, the last one that I was aware of. And they announced that they're starting in June, they're gonna um start doing the hybrid for all three groups that the mayor mentioned. And opening up their facilities, that that that's the current information that I have at this point.
Well, why don't we start on June 10th?
Am I seeing heads not around the screen? And we can all wear our masks too, if we're so inclined, of course. Good, it's settled. We'll start June 10th.
Yes, I agree, and I think if council members don't feel comfortable, you know, being that tight, then they take another two weeks to come back. I mean, that's okay.
That's certainly an option, yes. We're we're we have that capability. Okay, very good. Matt, is there anything else on this discussion item that you wanted to touch on?
I kind of, I kind of ran through some of the things that will be uh uh staff have already started discussing. Uh, related to the workplace, um, elements for staff. I kind of hit on that a little bit earlier. That was the other thing that I wanted to mention. And uh then regarding your uh uh decision here, uh, staff will get working on to make sure we've got. Everything in place from a technology standpoint. We might look at adding maybe a webcam here and there for the. Presenter like the lectern in the council chambers to make a little better uh virtual experience too. We just have the one big camera in the back of the council chambers, so we're gonna work on some of those things over the next month here and be ready for your June 10th meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. And thanks, Richard, for your update as well. We kind of went from one to the other. Is there anything else, either of you, at this point? Okay, thank you. Well, we'll jump right into reports then, and Pete, we're gonna come down to your end of the dial.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I have a image to start tonight to share with all of you. One moment.
You came on camera. I thought you were sharing you as the image.
Is everybody able to see the image of, looks like a circle that says keep Clive clean? Okay, so I'm proud to share this with all of you this evening. This is a product of many months of collaboration. Going back to this past fall, when I was working with a number of eighth grade students at Indian Hills Junior High and their teachers. They were working on a campaign about water resources and and really water pollution. As part of that, there's their. Teachers wanted to bring in an artistic component as well to along with their science. So this is the great example of STEAM, that's Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics, and Arts coming together. Based on the designs from the students and their presentations, I then went to local artist John Bosley, who runs Jipas Prints. He's also responsible for those wonderful green belt uh trail prints that you've seen in some parts of City Hall and that we've given to a few board commission members. And John was very generous, taking those ideas from the students and mocked up. Uh, with influence from all of the different designs, he mocked up three options. We refined it down to this and further refined it, and now I'm working with students at Valley High School to actually use their plasma cutters to cut. A series of stencils out of aluminum that will now allow us to apply these murals. Next to a number of storm sewer intakes around the Indian Hills Junior High Campus. So we look forward to doing that with students and sometime here in the last two weeks of May. Uh, we've already procured the paint that we'll need so that we can get out and and get something on the streets that looks good. The gray is just designed to look like the street pavement behind it, that white circle, the white white edge at the top is uh sort of the start of the mural. And then follows around the green belt representation and then the creek down below that. So so this is a wonderful collaboration. I in general, I I want to give a shout out to West Des Moines Schools. Indian Hills and also Crestview because that's been a wonderful two semesters and a weird school year. Uh, working with them and getting some great results from the work of those students and that faculty.
That's a great job, Pete. Um, thanks for that work. I I hope the bumper stickers are coming, so we can put them on the back of John's car.
There are many, many uh applications for these water resources stories as we keep uh telling the story of the green belt and this common. Thing that we all love, this common space that we all go together and care for. Next, uh, MetroNet. So some of the very first permits for MetroNet have now been approved for work in Clive neighborhoods. They've already been working on the north side of Hickman, and now they're starting to come down 156th Street as they established a loop. Around most of the city and the neighborhoods where they're going to be providing services in the future. They've also now got a few permits to get started actually into Clive neighborhoods. As they do this, the city is very, very focused on making sure residents know that the council and staff. Have their back, that if uh they aren't getting the sort of responses that they need or that Met- MetroNet has represented that they will provide. About what they need to watch out for when they're boring in the neighborhood, what they need to do to restore areas that they've disturbed after the work has been done. Uh, we want the residents to know that 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 we're there in their corner for them. There have been a couple moments thus far where MetroNet teams got a little confused about whether they were in Clive or West Des Moines. We've had to work quickly to make sure that they fixed uh a couple of those steps, and to their credit, they have. But uh just puts us in a on a posture where we know we're gonna need to be there watching carefully and making sure that they live up to the promises that they've. They've made. One way we'll do that is by continuously updating the project page on cityofclive.com. Indicating all of the areas where work has been permitted. If it's not on the website. Our goal is, our intention is to say it's they're not supposed to be doing their work there. Uh, there can be some time lags and all of that, but I know at least from the staff side with up works team with me and with other people involved. That we're gonna be making sure that we keep that city page very, very tight. So folks can be confident that they're getting accurate and timely information when they visit. Any questions about where MetroNet is at at this point? Okay. Next, happy to report that the Bears cleanup was by all accounts, if I that I've been able to come across, very successful. There were a couple folks who reached out to us uh because there was confusion about the date when they were supposed to have their things out on the corner. Uh, done in a couple of those cases, I was able to uh go and just. We'll do a little good casework and meet some residents and help them out with their problems. I was very happy to do that, but I want to call out all the folks with. Uh, administrative services team, Paula and Cheryl, especially everybody who was answering those calls because. Regardless of how many times we put it in print and other sources, a lot of times folks just want to hear it on the phone or hear it by stopping by, and they were the ones who handled. The huge percentage of those inquiries from residents, and they did a really good job. So I'm I'm happy now that folks have finally been able to kind of come out uh the many months of living at home and get some of those large items. Out of the garage, out of the basement, and responsibly get those disposed of. Finally, tonight, uh, want to give a shout out to our police department for good organizing. With the can and bottle drop off event that's happening this Saturday. Drop offs can start at nine and will continue till four, and some of the other attractions start at 11, including Dutch the Dog. In Clive for the one of the very first time, so if you'd like to come out and meet Dutch, uh, you'll have a chance to do that. Uh, there'll also be some. Burgers available, pork burgers available with pork producers and some other vehicles that'll be coming in. Uh, actually, here's the last thing I want to share, and I'm just gonna hold it up because I don't have it, but you may have all seen. Some communications that have shown up across the metro this month, other than this this week about the ongoing drought conditions and Des Moines Water Works communicating about. Some uh smart water resources practices that we all should be thinking about. Assuming that the drought persists and potentially gets worse. This could be, as it was last summer, a serious threat to the drinking water supply for residents and businesses in Clive and throughout the metro. And so on, at the request of Water Works, uh, they've asked member communities to start doing some proactive communications. So as folks are setting up their irrigation, especially for the season, that they do it in a way that is consistent with best practices. And keeps an eye on some water conservation. Overwatering uh can be a real problem. It can yield uh not at the. The best lawn outcome that you want, and it can certainly use this limited resource in ways. It doesn't keep our our top priorities at the top. As if the drought does come at us. Uh, in a way that it really stresses our water supply and starts to make pulling water from the Des Moines River. Impossible because of algae, uh, and other pollution, uh, then we're really gonna have to amp up the communications and maybe take additional steps after that. But for now, it's just about awareness and about people getting set up with an eye to being good stewards of this limited resource.
Pete, uh, just quickly on the K9 event, and so that's from nine to four, but the but kind of some of the fun events and. Start at 11, is that right?
That's correct. Here, I'll share.
Schedule, and I think the the chamber has a nice, uh, sent out a nice broadcast email on that as well.
We actually have, uh, I know Lieutenant Rayburg, who's been kind of heading up the vent from the PD is also on the. And the meeting tonight, Lieutenant Rayburg, I don't know if you wanted to fill in some of the details and uh talk to the council about Saturday's event.
Hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, uh, Pete, Mayor Council, Pete hit most of the high points, but. I guess the only thing I would add is this was approached, or we were approached by Container Recyclers Incorporated. It's a, it's also known as Crink. They do all the processing or a lot of the processing of recyclables, aluminum, glass. So they approached us with this idea to do this can redemption. Excuse me, my allergies are getting me. Uh, but we started talking about this back in, I don't know, January or February, and it. Just kind of built into what it what it was with the recycling thing, but it also coincided with Police Week, so that's why we decided to go ahead and. Set up a vehicle display. We're gonna have our drone out there, uh, some other things like that. Lifeflight, weather permitting, will be there, so. Uh, grab your empties and bring them out to us because we can use them. We're about 10 grand short of our goal. I I think if we get the response that they've had before, uh, I think we're gonna get pretty close to that, so.
So kind of if someone doesn't have empties but wants to write a check, they can do that as well, right?
Sure, we take checks, we take cash.
You take it all.
If it's worth something, we'll take it. Bear bonds, uh, Bitcoin, whatever.
Well, looking forward to the time, and thank you for, uh, thank you for doing this, and uh we'll look forward to it. Also, any other questions for Pete? Pete, thank you. Uh, we're gonna slide over to Ted.
Nothing but nightmare.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Eric.
Nothing but nightmare.
Eric, thank you.
We're on a roll. I'm passing two.
Just a couple of quick ads. Uh, of course, we have the Food Truck Fridays on, uh, well, this Friday and then the 21st. So very much looking forward to those, and I and and I will say this to this group, um, people notice when we're there. So it's really helpful, and I think it adds to the events, so thank you all as you attend these. I know everybody does that. Um, but it does make a difference, and so thanks for that in advance. Um, and then Lions Club is having a shred day uh on Saturday, the 22nd from eight to noon. Speaking for myself, I can't have enough shred days, so uh come on down. That'll be a lot of fun, and that's all I have. Susan.
Sorry, but I just have two quick things. One is that once again, Doug Olendike was the star presenter at a watershed meeting. It was the Polk County Council of WMAs, so he continues to help Clive to shine when it comes to watersheds. And then Bravo has a position open, in case you hadn't seen that, they're advertising for a community investment. In case you hadn't seen that, they're advertising for a community investment specialist. You'll recall they dropped down to just two staff during the pandemic times. So they're moving back to have someone who can coordinate the grant investments in our local entities.
Great, great news, Susan. Thank you. Mike?
The only thing I have is I'm excited for Weaver to be able to see me again, June 10th. Person.
Ted's brimming with excitement. I can see it from here.
I know he is.
I've seen on the chat Pete put out to everybody that we're having a Green Belt goats food truck Friday tomorrow as well. And that's, what's the time on that again, Pete?
Not that the Green Belt goats will be at Food Truck Friday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
And, and now that I read it too, it looks like we might be eating Green Belt goats at Food Truck Friday. That's not my intent either.
Well, that's exciting. That ended up itself for a lot of people. That's good to know. Thank you.
Pete, what's the weather forecast?
Well, this point, pulling up my app.
Percent rain was the last I saw.
Looks like we have a chance. Yeah, maybe some light rain. We'll watch it closely.
Pretty scattered, I think. They've changed their forecast since the last couple of days.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Matt, we'll, we'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things tonight, just follow up on Supervisor Brownell has mentioned about the, the grant application. So just to step back on that a little bit. So a year ago, we had actually made that application. And this was reimbursement for the first FEMA buyout that we did with, this was the university photo area that we did with the, kind of one of our first rounds of the buyouts. And, and Polk County had offered to, to provide some reimbursement for the, the buyout effort that we were doing. And so that whole grant process got paused for a year with the pandemic and they were obviously directing their resources to other things that Supervisor Brownell talked about and then restarted things here recently. And so that is the, the grant application that he's alluding to. And, and actually working with our friends at Great Outdoors Foundation on that is being kind of the pass through to help us with that. So hopeful to hear that in the next month or so that we can get that grant award and kind of reimburse for this council's efforts in the buyout program. So I wanted to mention that. Also something new. This is something we've been, staff have all been thinking about in terms of the polling location that we have for voting here at City Hall. And then the use of that room that was kind of converted over to library programming. We've kind of thought, you know, during the November timeframe, you know, the Aquatic Center isn't open and we have the, the special events building available. We've actually submitted for and worked with Polk County Auditor to actually move the polling location across the street to the special events building. So we can utilize that larger parking lot and not have it mixed in with library traffic and staff traffic at the same time. Just make sure we have maximum like parking opportunities for that. So we've actually made that change and there'll be notices that'll be going out prior to the elections this fall that the voting location will then move. And that actually works out really well for the Polk County Auditor kind of workers because then they have their own room to themselves. Restrooms right there for that voting experience. And so we're kind of happy to make that change. So we just did that here recently. And just a preview for those kind of future council items as we get into next meeting, we'll be bringing, Richard will be bringing back kind of the updated phasing based on the council direction related to Green Belt Landing. So excited to share that with you. Of course, there's a couple of items related to that on the consent agenda tonight. He also will be bringing back one of the strategic planning items that you all identified was kind of talking about a long-term aquatic center, kind of strategic plan, if you will, or facility plan. Staff has been working on that and so we're hoping to have that back for you for a discussion and reaction here at your next meeting. And then as we head into that June 10th meeting, WestCom 280 that I've talked about earlier, did my first presentation with City of Urbendale earlier this week. And then Central Iowa Water Trails, bringing that discussion to the full council here, that first meeting in June. And then lastly, just some other key dates to add to the, to the mayor's list there. On next Tuesday, the historical society annually likes to do a lunch for city staff. That will happen on the 18th. And then for everybody here, just a reminder that May 27th, that morning at 8:00 AM at Campbell Park around the shelter area there, we're going to be doing the employee appreciation breakfast. Kind of a reschedule from January and be handing out the service awards. And we'll have two council members that will be getting their 10-year service awards. And I wonder, hopefully they know who they are. But we'll have that as long as well as other service awards for other staff and comments from the mayor and myself. So look forward to seeing you all there on the 27th. That's how, that's all I have, Your Honor, unless you have any questions.
Council questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Covered a lot of good ground tonight. Matthew, any additional correspondence?
No, sir.
Counsel, anything for the good of the order?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you for filling in tonight. It sounds like on short notice as well. So nice to have you with us.
Happy to do so. Yeah.
Seeing nothing further, I'm going to adjourn us at 7:35 PM. Everybody have a great weekend.